Representative Horton and her husband, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the role reflect that we do have Councilmember Leifert and Councilmember Lawrence absent tonight, but we do have a quorum. Tonight, we also will have a proclamation for Make Music Day. And Councilmember Pembell, will you please start us off?
Sir. Whereas the city of Hastings has declared Saturday, June 21st as Make Music Day, and whereas this is the ninth year the City of Hastings Park and Recreation Department has celebrated Make Music Day, Make Music Day is a free celebration of music around the world on June 21st, beginning in 1982 in France. It is now held the same day each year in more than 1,000 cities and 120 countries, and...
Whereas the purpose of Make Music Day is to encourage and invite Hastings residents and visitors to celebrate by enjoying free performances cultivating civic pride and a sense of community, and...
Whereas Make Music 2025, excuse me, whereas Make Music Day 2025 will be held from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Levy Park, Pleasant Hill Library, Park Ridge, and Spiral Brewery, and the full schedule can be found on the City of Hastings webpage and social media platforms, and...
Whereas in case of inclement weather, Make Music Day will be canceled at Levy Park, and updates will be shared on our city website and city Facebook page, and...
Whereas local and metro area bands and soloists will donate their performances, and volunteers will donate their time to help provide sound support and emcee the event. We want to specifically thank Chuck Spavin for his ongoing support and role as lead volunteer for the event. The City of Hastings is appreciative of these civic-minded performances and volunteers to help make this event possible. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Mary Fassbender, and the City of Hastings Council hereby declares June 21st, 2025 as Make Music Day in Hastings, Minnesota. Thank you, council. Tonight, we also have some exciting visitors for the council and for TV land to hear. We have with us tonight Shane Hudella and Jeff Tafe, who are representing Hockey Day Minnesota, which will be in Hastings, January of 2026. Welcome to the podium, and tell us what all the good things we have going on.
Thanks, Mayor, council. Honored to be here. I was telling Jeff, the last time I was here, I was fighting for a fence around my pool. So, much more pleasant circumstance tonight. Excited to talk about Hockey Day and all the great things that are going to happen in our community and some of the details around it. And then, we have a list of city requests to review and answer questions on. First slide here, obviously, we have our Hastings City logo, and then there's the overarching Minnesota Wild United Healthcare logo that encompasses our entire state. So, a few things about Hockey Day coming up. We are going to have eight days of programming in our community. We're the first Hockey Day that has had a two-year window compared to the other 19 years that they got about one year to plan all this. So, we're going heavy on programming, eight days of games. Two of those days will be televised, one day on FanDuel Sports Network and the other day on Flow TV. Variety of matchups, high school junior varsity, tons of high school varsity games, NA3HL, which is junior hockey, NCAA, all the way up to the pro level at the American Hockey League, which is the feeder system for the National Hockey League and the Minnesota Wild. Teams traveling from four different states. We have teams as far away as Warroad coming down from Minnesota. We have a South Dakota team that's anticipated to play, a team from Iowa, and a team from Wisconsin. So, all of that's great. It's all the big-ticket, sell-your-ticket games. But the cool thing for me is every kid in Hastings will have an opportunity to skate on the Hockey Day rink when all the infrastructure is built out. So, pretty cool for those guys. We're projecting attendance right now to be north of 100,000 people. So, Supercool is a lifelong resident of town to showcase our town, but then we think about economic impact from every bar, every restaurant, every hotel being full for multiple days. The proceeds from the event benefit the Hastings hockey program, both the boosters and the high school, as well as United Heroes League, which helps military kids and veterans with hockey. The event is a partnership between the Minnesota Wild, FanDuel Sports Network, and our local organizing committee, which is made up of folks from United Heroes League, folks from the high school and hockey booster program, and then we're lucky to have some city staff involved too, just to help guide us. The most important thing for me, though, is what a great way to showcase our community, show the great things that Hastings has to offer, and then create some lifelong memories for these kids to get to play on the rink when everything's all built out. It'll stick with them for a lifetime. You can learn more, too. I'm going to try and whip through some of this here so we can get to questions, but HockeyDayMN.com, pretty easy to remember that, and I'm sure there'll be a copy of the presentation for council and staff after. So, this is the venue. If you're not familiar with United Heroes League, we're located just about a mile east of here on 10th Street or Ravenna Trail. You may notice, we'll see if this works on here, yep. We have an outdoor refrigerated rink already. We've operated for two years out there. Every year, we've had about 60 different communities that come out and play experiential games. Everything else around this is being built, and it's massive. Capacity around the rink, for example, will have 5,000 seats around the rink, 1,200 seats on the south side, 800 seats on the west side, and 3,000 seats on the north side in a massive grandstand. We'll have a VIP tent for corporate partners and distinguished guests, a very large entertainment tent that Treasure Island and the Prairie Island community has partnered on, substantial food and beverage, an auxiliary rink that will have Little Tykes games and activities going on, figure skating rinks, so we can integrate the Hastings Figure Skating Club into programming. We'll have a mini puck golf, so if you think of mini golf, only with the hockey stick and puck and a little bit bigger cup. We're building that this summer. One of the key things that we're excited about, though, is this three-quarter of a mile skate trail that will start at our Veterans Monument, travel through the woods, through or along the base of our bluff, and then circle back to the start point. We'll have the strung light bulbs going through, so we can use that at dark. And our plan is to open this up about a month before the event. So, hopefully, the Saturday before Christmas, we'll have guests out there on the skate trail doing this super unique experience. And we also think that that will garner tremendous media coverage as well. There's really nothing else like it in the Twin Cities area here. So, as news stations are looking for those feel-good holiday time news stories, we anticipate a lot of coverage on that particular component. Kind of the back of the house here, this is the old Extreme Sandbox building that United Heroes League owns. This will kind of be the brains of Hockey Day. The Minnesota Wild will occupy that building and share it with FanDuel Sports Network. There'll be a very large television production area just behind the West Bleachers. This is broadcast the entire day of Hockey Day up until the Wild game starts. So, hours and hours of coverage on a huge network. We'll also have a public drop-off area here. We have a VIP in a couple of different general parking lots, but we wanted the ability for people to take SmartRide down there, for local businesses to perhaps offer a shuttle from their retail establishment to shuttle people down. And to be honest, we've done a lot with the event to keep ticket prices down and to try and make it affordable for everyone to attend. So, a great way to carpool or just drop your kids off, let them go to the rink, enjoy the game, and not have to get stuck with the extra parking charge. We're starting to put together some pretty cool renderings of what this is going to look like. There's some branding issues here. We haven't dropped in partner logos and things like that, but it's a pretty realistic view that WSB has done a tremendous job down in partnership with HTG Architects on showing users what the venue is going to look like. If you look at the far left, our VIP tent will have an entire wall of glass for those guests to be able to sit in comfort and watch the games out front. This main bleacher system that you're looking at here, United Heroes League is actually building this permanently right now. It's a 1,200-seat bleacher system for hosting our Raider High School games when they play outdoors. Opens up some other venue things for us, too, but it's a pretty cool view. And when you start to look at the map and 3D imagery like this, we're really trying to put on a professional product. So, when people go to the website, when news stories are done on Hastings and Hockey Day coming to our community, we have some first-rate things to showcase, not only our venue, but our community. Lots of sponsors. We've been working our butts off for over a year on this one. It takes so long. We're really excited to have the event presented locally by Twin Cities Orthopedics, some other major sponsors in the Prairie Island community and Treasure Island, Palo Windows, Cub, and a whole list of others. You recognize a lot of the big ones from town here, Premier Banks, the Hastings Car Dealerships, DuGerrals, Hoffman McNamara, a few others on here. But really, we've been excited for our partnership and the cooperation from the city and the chamber so far. One small side story, one of the recent Hockey Days did not have a great relationship with their city government, and it was problematic in a lot of ways, not only for the event, but for the community. So, super thankful to have the support from our community and our chamber. It just makes things so much easier when we need to talk about permitting and cooperation to try and really showcase our town. And together, I think we can make a huge impact for our community. I'm not sure how many hockey fans are on the council here. You're going to see these images again in a pretty special video that we're going to have coming out. We're super fortunate to get legendary players Mike Madonna, Neil Broughton, Natalie Darwitz, and Zach Perizzi down to meet with some Hastings Raider players, and they're creating a pretty special video that will showcase our community. So, really, it's about the kids, it's about the community. Excited, we'll get a little boost for not only our program, but for the Hastings Hockey Boosters and the high school kids as well. So, with that, I think everyone has a copy of an initial list, and I'll take my glasses off so I can read it, of potential asks from the committee to the city. So, maybe I'll work through these quick, just highlight them at a high level, and then we can answer any questions on that and have a short Q and A, too, if you have just any general questions on Hockey Day Minnesota. The one thing I just realized I forgot from the presentation, it's the 20th anniversary of this event. How great is it to have it in Hastings? We know there'll be extra promotional energy from the Minnesota Wild and FanDuel just around this 20th anniversary, so really excited for that. But to the list, these items are anticipated requests and potential needs from the Hockey Day Minnesota Committee to partner with the City of Hastings to make it as successful as possible for the community. The arena already called out and reserved a day. We're contractually required to have a backup venue in case of inclement weather. They haven't had to cancel a Hockey Day in 19 years, but they still require us just in case it's pouring rain and 55 degrees and play is absolutely not possible. The show must go on, as they say. So, we've requested the date, just so that Mr. Elliott could block it off. But we would like to request a potential waiver of those fees. We'll get clarity on if we're required to also put in the Hockey Day Minnesota logo in an ice sheet at the arena as well. I don't think we have clarity on that one. If it's required, then we'll work with Jeff and the staff at the arena to see if that's possible. Few peripheral things, every community that participates, the kids are going to get Hockey Day banners. So, we're just trying to drill down and say, hey, is it okay for city staff to spend the time to hang these banners in the arenas? Same thing, there's some that would potentially go on light poles. And then the final thing, we've had some discussions and seen some of the artwork for the amazing mural for the arena, and there's been discussion about, do we integrate this piece of history that's going to be Hockey Day into that mural? If artistically and aesthetically, the city thinks that would be appropriate. And I think the committee is happy to cover any expense with that. Police and public safety, we know right now we're going to need approximately four officers during the event, and we fully anticipate covering that expense from the committee. There will be alcohol served out there. Ravenna Trail is a high-traffic roadway that we are going to have pedestrians cross from one of the lots. So, we know we need to tap into the great HPD that we have and use some of those resources to help with the event. Command post with command vehicle and supervisor, we anticipate covering that expense as well. We would, I don't know how to pronounce this, Pythagorean barriers? It's got to be like a Jersey barrier. Close, okay. We would like some help on those if possible. We're, you know, you start talking about 100,000 people on the campus over a week. We're going to have a couple of really high-impact days. The last Friday and Saturday, we anticipate 25,000 or more. So, you think about that, it's a full XL Energy Center plus about another 6,000 people. So, we are going to have some pretty intense needs just for routing that pedestrian traffic to keep them safe. So, barriers will be super important there. The drone team, we're going to request that from the county resources to be at no charge. Same with EOD dogs or bomb detection canines. We do anticipate needing some of the Hastings Police Reserves for traffic control. We want to keep, I think, the licensed officers within the event where alcohol's being served and where the highest concentration of people are. So, I think utilizing the reserves for traffic control is prudent. Electronic message boards, just to help with road and pedestrian traffic along Ravenna Trail and coming from in-town here from Vermillion Street. We'd love to have the city's help there. And then, quick reaction team from South Metro SWAT. You know, crazy world out there, as we've all seen the last few days and just the meetings we've had with the police chief. We want to be prepared for everything. Now, the SWAT, I believe, is a county asset, not a city asset, but we're going to pursue that to be a quick reaction force from them, free of charge. Fire, the big thing there is ambulances. We'll have some requirements depending on the level of the game, if it's a high school game or a pro-level game at the AHL level, to have one or two ambulances at the event. We've talked through that with the fire chief and about potentially bringing in other agencies, so we don't leave Hastings without enough ambulance coverage. So, we're working through that. Ambulance and fire support services determined by the chief and his department, we anticipate covering these costs. I mean, it's the cost of doing business, and, you know, we want to make sure that the patrons at the event, as well as the players on the ice, are safe and have the best care possible. First aid station, being staffed, we want to have adequate first aid. We're early in some dialogue with Alina. We may cover this through a partnership with Alina. We hope that works out. If not, we know we're going to have to cover expense on it. Permit for fire code, yep, we're planning on paying that one. The skate trail, as cool as it is, there's some help that we need on that. We're just, we're so excited about that. But we could use a hand from Public Works on that, with use in particular from the city water truck. With our current construction project, we just got portable water on-site for the first time at the rink, which we're really excited about. But we don't have any water trucks. If we could get some help from the city on that. With the initial flood, once we get our base coat down, we own three Zambonis. So, maybe that would be a good city council meeting, get you guys out there to drive the Zamboni to flood the skate trail or something. You'd be surprised the amount of people that have approached us about opportunities to drive one of the Zambonis. But we could use some help with some of those Public Works access to help us get the initial flood down, and then we can take it from there with the Zamboni. Community investment fund, I think we've applied for the 7,500 already. As we come up on our first big event in-town, which will be July 18th, down at Rivertown Days, we'll have the Minnesota Wild, Katie Storm, FanDuel personality, representatives from the other communities that are participating. We'll be doing the big grand announcement of the official date and the matchups. We've talked with city staff about decorating downtown, really making an impression with banners downtown, banners on our ice rink as the season progresses and it gets to be closer to hockey time for the municipal rinks. We went out and got some bids on those things, and between the cost of those banners and getting them down here and getting them up, we came in right around $7,500. Oh, let's see. Hanging materials, again, just looking for the okay to use some minimal Public Works staff time to actually go out, since they have the lift to get up there and hang those on the lights downtown. Excuse me. Next up, the Met Council overflow parking. The city's been great in working with Met Council to get the approval to open up over 1,000 parking spots at what used to be the old Barton Sand and Gravel Pit. So, we'd like to ask for some help there to potentially have the city park staff come in and mow or burn that down once before the snow flies. All right, social media. We'd love to have some help to share and promote events coming up. Excuse me. Not only our big matchup announcement, but we'll have 100 Days Out event, where it'll be the big push to launch the final 100 days of Hockey Day. And there'll likely be one or two other big-ticket things that pops up in the media that we would love the city to help share. Building permits and special event permits, we anticipate covering the expenses on those, as well as any corrections or things that we need to do as a result of that permitting. And then, we would love to provide space down at the venue to showcase the city, whether that's a city history booth in a 10-by-10 or 10-by-20 space, or if council has any other ideas on creative things that we can do at the event to really showcase our community. We're lucky, we've got a 70-acre campus out there now with just a ton of room. Kind of the sky's the limit for how we can showcase the city out there in addition to the great sport of hockey. So, I think with that, I'll open or ask for any questions that council may have, either on Hockey Day Minnesota in general or on anything from the list that you all should have.
Thanks, Shane. Council, councilmember House.
Thank you, Honor. I am so grateful to see this event, and thank you so much for your hard work to bring this to Hastings. As someone who used to play hockey for a while growing up, having this be in our town would be a dream as a kid. And getting to hear that they get to go play on the ice for a while and all the amazing... I really love the idea of that trail loop, that's going to be amazing. With that being said, what would be your biggest day to go on? For people listening, what's our biggest day? Do you have any ideas on the biggest event one?
Thank you for the question. There's going to be a few of them. There's, without completely tipping our hand of scheduling, because there's a little bit of shroud of secrecy around some of the games.
I want you to give up the details, yeah, quite before Rivertown Days, of course.
Right. You know, the Wednesday in the middle of the programming week, we'll have a ton of pro hockey players out there. We're going to do an alumni charity game of USA versus the world. So, we'll have all of our US-born players like Jeff from right here in Hastings, no less, against pro athletes from every other country in the world. And even beyond hockey, there's some pro athletes like Justin Morneau, who's a Hall of Fame baseball player, Canadian, also a huge hockey guy. So, Wednesday will be great. It'll be very interactive with the fans from our community. Friday will be out of this world. We're going to host an American Hockey League game Friday out at our arena. It's never been done before as part of a Hockey Day, and there's only been a handful of American Hockey League games that have been played outdoors. So, that'll be a TV broadcast day, it'll be a sell-out. We will be busy from opening gate until well after the AHL game. Before their game, we have a really great women's NCAA matchup that's going to happen. One team's from out of state, and one team might rhyme with UMD, so...
Fantastic. One last question, I'm sure there's a lot of volunteers needed for this event. Where can volunteers go to sign up?
So, I believe the link is on HockeyDayMN.com right now. It is hundreds of volunteers every day to pull this off. We essentially have a signup genius on there right now. We're refining... We're refining constantly the volunteer needs and some of that is, is based on what's the game, what's the anticipated crowd size. I, I hadn't quite gotten to the last one, the Saturday of Hockey Day, January 24th. That's when our varsity boys and our varsity girls will have some premier matchups. We're also planning right now to fly in a very special guest on a military Blackhawk helicopter to drop the puck. So both Friday and Saturday, huge games.
Thank you so much. With that, again, I just appreciate what you're doing for our community. This is gonna be an amazing event, not only for your organizations, but also for the businesses and for the town as a whole. Just a great way to showcase.
Yeah, thanks so much. We've, we actually have been working with some local businesses to create some very special products too that you'll see soon.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Virchov?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Shane, for this amazing presentation. There's so much thoughtfulness that went into this. I so appreciate your comments around the importance for a partnership with the city as well. I, I really, really appreciate that. That resonated with me. And I really even was grateful for the way that you outlined everything within the presentation in terms of what would be a charge, what wouldn't be a charge. Just makes it easier, I think, for this body to be able to get a sense of some of the needs and what those costs are, whether they are in kind or whether they're staffing. I'm so excited about this. This is amazing. I can't wait to sign up as a volunteer. This is so awesome. A couple of just quick questions that I had, and I have a feeling that you have already thought of these months ago and that you've got the answer on the tip of your tongue. When you were talking about the parking area or the drop-off area, it made me think about people that are differently abled or maybe having some handicap access. So that would be great for them, but then it made me think of what about if they want to actually be able to, you know, come and enjoy and watch a game and, and watch some of the activities? Is there special seating and, and things like that that are available?
Yeah, so the, the venue will be completely ADA accessible, so anyone requiring wheelchair access will be let into that VIP lot. We'll have handicap parking spaces that will get even without a VIP parking pass, will get to park right next to the rink. Our bleachers that we are building right now are completely ADA compliant. They have ramps going up and I think we have like four or five wheelchair seats plus a companion seat right on the front row. So super important, we deal with a lot of combat and injured veterans that need a little hand with access sometimes.
I had a feeling that you had this well thought out and obviously that is very much the case. One other question that I have, if I may, Mayor? Was about, I know I went on the website, which looks incredible, and when you're talking about ticket prices and things like that being announced in August, I'm wondering if there's been any conversation within the committee about maybe having either some scholarships for tickets or maybe having some tickets put away for different household income levels? We know that there's so many things that people are battling these days. My day job is I work at Hastings Family Service and we're seeing a massive increase in people that are in need in our community and we wouldn't want that necessarily to be a barrier to experiencing something that might even be once in a lifetime here in our community. So I'm just wondering if there's been.
Yep. Great question. One, if, if we look at ticket prices from Hockey Day last year, what were they, like $80?
For Saturday.
For the Saturday of Hockey Day. Really outrageous prices. One of the reasons that we went for big infrastructure and, and a large amount of seats is, is to be able to lower that ticket price down, so right now, we're anticipating Friday and Saturday tickets being 25 bucks. The other days, like 20 bucks and, and below with some discounts for students and things like that, so. Yep, yep. I think we've got like a community plan too where we're gonna do like free admission or $5 to get in. But all that said, we've actually had some of our partners approach us to potentially subsidize tickets for this very thing, so the Prairie Island community has offered to buy some blocks of tickets to disperse to community charity partners and things of that nature, so I, I think we should have that well covered. We don't want economic situation to be a barrier to come out and experience history here too.
Thank you, Councilmember Virchov. Councilmember Pembel?
Shane, a couple of quick questions. One, in the parking areas, are you gonna have some kind of, you know, shuttling operation to move people around to the bleachers and back out to their parking areas? I know as a senior citizen and speaking for folks that are close. But it, it, especially if the weather's difficult, is there, you know, like a horse-drawn something or whatever, something along those lines to, you know, maneuver people around from their vehicle?
That's, that's a great question. I turn 55 this December and I've had a lot of back pain this last year, so I, I'm with you, Councilmember Pembel. We've talked, we have a partnership with a golf cart company that has like stretch golf carts that we can throw for people on. Young athletic buck like Taffer, hey, you can hike it up there, but folks that could use that service, we're pretty optimistic that we'll have it there and have it actually as a free partnership from them.
The second question is, last year's event, what was the biggest takeaway that you folks saw at Shakopee that you wanted to make sure wasn't part of the issue in Hastings?
So I'll be, I'll be super candid and know that a lot of good people on the committee trying to do their best for Shakopee. The bottom line, they struggled to raise money for the event. They really struggled on partnerships and, and without that revenue and without a great relationship with the city, it, it's really hard to make the investment into, hey, we're gonna make sure that things are accessible. We're gonna go big on infrastructure. We're gonna make this really a special event. You know, it's, it's no different than home budget. You know, we can want a brand new Cadillac all we want, but if we don't go out and raise the money, we're still gonna be driving the Yugo, right? So we knew we had to get after it on raising revenue and partnerships and we had a lot of early success with that, which has allowed us to really try and build out the campus. We're kind of the anomaly too, to be honest. The other 19 years, they've taken this event and just giving it, given it essentially to that local hockey booster with some business leaders involved and, and many of them have been spectacular. We're the anomaly in that our local hockey boosters is involved. But so are we from United Heroes League and we have 16 years of pro player ambassadors and a big hockey network that is really excited about the event, so the quick answer, you gotta raise money to put on the show and, and we've done that.
I, I was just wanted to bring that up because as seeing what was transpiring last year, I thought, boy, this organization here in town better have it on the ball and I appreciate your answer and I look forward to enjoying several days out there myself, so take care.
Thanks so much. We'll make sure we have a multi-day ticket pack.
And text me, I'll come pick you up. Shane, you know my heart is so all over this and so full just of our community stepping up. I do want to give a shout out just to ease council's mind and whoever is watching. The committee that is organizing this is amazing. They have stepped up from all areas of our community, be it hockey, be it business owners, people that have the knowledge behind the food trucks, the vendors, what type we should have. I mean, we're very mindful of all the various events that we are doing and the ticket price was a very large conversation because those that attended last year's event thought it was very expensive. We want everyone to be able to be there and to be able to come through those gates and be prideful of what's going on in our community, so Shane, hats off to you. You started this two years ago, two and a half years ago, and with the vision with it and then bringing in Jeff and all the others. It's, it's just so remarkable for our town, so it's going to be the best.
Thanks so much, Mayor. We're super excited. Hopeful that it's the biggest thing to ever come to town. I think if we draw 100,000, it will be and like I said, proud lifelong resident of this community and love to show it off, so we get that and a great experience for our kids, so super excited.
Thank you. Any other, no, no other questions?
All right.
Thanks to both of you. Jeff, you want any, you wanna say anything?
This is the easiest meeting ever.
I, I basically bring him along for ICAN. Thanks so much.
Well, he was one of those kids that skated on our ice and went on to NHL, so. It's gonna be awesome. Great. Thanks, guys. Councilmembers, are there any items or corrections to the meetings from June 2nd? Okay, comments from the audience or from Zoom? Anyone wish to speak to the council at this time in the audience? Okay, any council items to be considered? Okay, consent agenda. Councilmembers, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember House?
So moved.
Councilmember Virchov, second. Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, we have a presentation and approval of the 2024 Comprehensive Financial Report. And for this item, we have an introduction by Ryan Ingelstad of Bergen KDV. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you to provide a recap of the audit work that we did for the 2024 year. And prior to the meeting, I did distribute hard copies of the various documents that are issued as part of the, part of the audit process. But given the, the length of the, of the documents, we condensed that into about a 12-slide kind of a presentation here, so with that, I'll, I will jump right in. If there's, if there is anything that, you know, if you had a chance to, as you're, you know, glancing through anything that caught your eye and I don't touch on it here in my comments, feel free to bring that up. And also, if there's any questions as I'm going through the information that is included in the, in the slides, feel free to stop me and we'll address those questions on the spot, so, okay? All right, so starting off towards the front of the Comprehensive Financial Report, our section of that is the Independent Auditor's Report, of course. And it's about three pages of information. The most important section or the one that gets the most attention is the opinion that we are providing with regards to the city's financial statements. And I'll jump down to that later bullet and just get right to it and then I'll come back to the other ones. But it is, the nature of the opinion that we're providing is often referred to as a, as an unmodified or clean opinion. And that is the optimal result when it comes to a set of financial statements. So it, it provides for, as the last bullet indicates, that assurance to the outside users of the information, to the council and so forth, that you can place reliance on, on the numbers. You know, we're fortunate to come in and, and, you know, the city staff has, has things in great order. So I know the information you're getting, you know, throughout the year as well and, and so forth is, keeps you well informed and on more of a real-time basis, but it's always good to have this, this annual process to have a, have an independent outside party come in and, and do some detailed testing and making sure the, there's appropriate substantiation there, so. Just briefly on the, a couple other bullet points here on responsibilities. So as far as management, the responsibility there is the fair presentation of the financial information to us so we can conduct our audit as well as maintaining appropriate internal controls. And with that, I'll shift into the auditor's responsibilities. And on the internal control piece, as part of a traditional annual financial statement audit for a governmental entity, the standards are not structured in a way where it's really, it's not a deep dive look at the internal controls. It's more of a process of gaining an understanding of the controls in place and doing some walkthrough procedures and so forth. So it's not that deep dive that happens with, say, a public company audit and things like that. But nonetheless, we are looking over, making sure there's appropriate segregation of duties and, and things of that nature. And then we would report if we, you know, had any issues that surfaced as, as part of those procedures. And then our other duty as, as the auditors is to design and execute our audit approach, performing various tests of balances and transactions where that adheres to the professional standards, puts us in a position where we can provide reasonable assurance that there will not be any material misstatements that would go undetected as part of the process. And then I will, so we'll get back to some of the financials, some of the numbers, the results and financial position of the city. Here, we've, I've got some slides with graphs and so forth included later, but I'll just finish covering the other reports that we issue first and then we'll, we'll get back to those. So one of the other documents that we have, the shortest of the three, is our Report on Compliance with Government Auditing Standards as well as the Minnesota Legal Compliance. Within the Report on Government Auditing Standards, in addition to covering general compliance-type matters as it pertains to regulations, grant agreements, contracts, things of that nature, we are also required to report on any matters around internal controls related to financial reporting. As I mentioned earlier, the city staff, Chris and Ashley and team do a remarkable job of, of having things in good shape for us. And, and the number of adjustments we have is fairly minimal compared to what we experienced perhaps with other, other municipalities. But from time to time, it does happen where there are an adjustment or two that surface as part of the process. And the unique thing with governmental accounting and reporting is that within the financial report, there's information on an individual fund level. So as auditors, we have to calculate materiality at that individual fund level as well. So if we end up with an adjustment that hits that materiality level at an individual fund, on an individual fund basis, the audit, the reporting standards on internal controls as dictated by the audit standards really don't give us any flexibility but to report on an internal control matter as it pertains to that, you know, those audit adjustments. So the, the way it's worded and so forth in the report, we, unfortunately, we don't have any flexibility with that. It's all prescribed by the standards. But I did want to make that clear that, you know, the fact that that's reported this year, you know, it certainly is, but it's unusual for the city and not something that is in, in our opinion, anything that's a pervasive type of, you know, concern. Just a couple of one-off type of accrual entries and things like that that we helped to kind of get to the right, the right answer on how, you know, how it should be recorded. So, so that is the information on that piece, but again, all in all, financials were in great shape, good solid internal controls, all of that. So great efforts by, by the city and all the folks involved. And then no non-compliance matters noted either more generally around regulations and, and contracts and so forth. But then with this Minnesota Legal Compliance section of that report, the State Auditor's Office requires us to perform various procedures that are laid out within a a, an audit guide that they publish on an annual basis. And it goes through the various areas that are noted here and basically addresses all the pertinent state statutes that cities have to follow. So we, we performed a variety of tests to address those different areas and, under the, kind of the dictated procedures by the, by the state auditor's office. And through the work we did on that, there were no findings that surfaced. So everything in, in good order there and crossing Ts, dotting the Is when it comes to things like bidding out projects and entering into those contracts and, and so on and so forth. That being just one of many examples of the areas that are touched through that testing. Okay? So then we also have our communications letter, the document that's kind of in the, as far as the middle in terms of the, the length of it. Within there, there's various sections, one being the required communication items. From just a very high level, I don't have a later slide on it. But that section of the letter is required as part of every audit, and it touches on things like if we had any kind of difficulties as we were performing the audit, if there are disagreements with management, if we're aware of consultations that happened with other accountant CPA firms, as far as opinion shopping on how things should be recorded. Those types of things would get addressed within that section. And what's noted in there, it's all very positive in that there wasn't anything of the, of the nature of those kind of items that I mentioned that surfaced as part of the process. Chris and team are excellent to work with and well-prepared, very responsive and, and certainly take the audit process seriously. So we, we greatly appreciate that. So then with the financial analysis, within that communications letter, we've got the same graphs included. And then within the letter, there is some narrative information that's associated with each of the graphs that we're going to take a look at. That narrative info, we don't put that in the slide deck, but I'll just, from a very high level, provide some comments as it pertains to some of these slides here. So, and in most of them, it's showing a five-year trend to get a sense as to kind of what has transpired over that, over that time period for the city. And really focusing on the main operating funds, so think general funds, fire and ambulance, parks and rec, and then the various utility funds are the ones we'll take a look at here in the graphs. So for the general fund, the main thing that, in addition to how did, how did things go in terms of adhering to the budget, the other thing that gets a lot of attention is the fund balance position for a municipality. And the fund balance is, is extremely important to have an appropriate level just because of the, the, well, not just because, but one of the big driving factors is the timing of the, the primary cash inflows to the city throughout the course of a year. So think about the property tax settlements happening every May 15 and October 15. So at the end of December, municipalities really need to have a good amount set aside to cover those operating costs up through receiving that first set, you know, first property tax settlement in the middle, middle of May timeframe. So there's guidelines out there. The city has a policy as to, from, on a percentage basis, the amount of coverage to have compared to the annual budget for the general fund. And that's 35 to 45% coverage of that total annual expenditures. And then the state auditor's office has guidelines out there too, recommendations, and there's this 35 to 50%. So where it comes out, and that's really a focus on the unassigned category. So here, on this graph, you can see that things trending upwards and then cut a bit of a dip down, particularly in 2024. And there's a, and in the communications letter, it's called out in the narrative, especially with the budget to actual schedule. But the nuance that happened there, which really drove the decrease on the fund balance side, is there's a technical accounting rule that if a, if a receivable is not collected within 60 days of the next year, that revenue then gets deferred to the following year. So the, the grant, primary grant funding tied to the city hall project, which is all those expenditures are going through the general fund, there's a receivable book, but because it wasn't collected until after that 60-day mark of the next year, that revenue will now get, that, that, that makes up that receivable, will show up in the 2025 numbers. So you bring that back in, you would see an increase in the overall fund balance as well as the unassigned fund balance. So really what's happening is a, kind of a, within the general fund, a temporary borrowing, if you will, of the unassigned fund balance to cover on that city hall project until that payment on that, on that grant came through. So, so that is the, the, the big thing to provide as a, as a side commentary to help kind of get a full understanding of kind of what, what transpired here at the general fund. And even with that, the 7.2 million of unassigned fund balance that's showing at the end of the year, that makes up about 40% of the annual expenditures for the fund. So it's kind of right in the midpoint range of, of your policy of 35 to 45. You bring that, if you kind of adjust for that receivable issue, you're more up at the 45%, 45, maybe even slightly closer to 50, which is kind of the target that the state auditor's office puts in place and gives, again, that, that ample coverage for cash flow needs going into the first half of the next year. So, okay? All right. I'll be much quicker on all the other slides, but that one, I felt warranted by the most side comments. So here, just some pie charts, just to show the allocation of the revenue sources for the general fund. As is expected, this doesn't change too much from one year to the next. Years where there's significant changes in the amount of aid through grants or local government aid, things like that, you'll see some shifting happening, which in this case, that, that was indeed, you know, as far as comparing 2024 to 23, you can see intergovernmental 19% versus the 15. So then you've got a numerator and denominator impact there, which then kind of lowers all the other percentages around. So a slight dip on the taxes and assessments and so forth, but very much in line year over year. And then just more details on the numbers for those various categories for the five years that we're looking at. And as expected, the increase on the taxes right in line with the approved levies and intergovernmental, expected to jump around a little bit just based on grant activity and so forth. So, okay? So then, looking at the expenditures for the general funds, again, here doesn't usually change too much, with the exception of if there's significant capital projects where the expenditures are going through in the general fund. And again, with the city hall project being rather significant, and a lot of that coming in in 2024, you can see the big jump on the capital outlay being 24% compared to 13 the year before. So again, same, same impact on the other categories then, in bringing those down a bit relative to the, you know, based on that increase on capital outlay. Public safety being the most significant category, 44% and then 49% the year before without, you know, those significant capital expenditures. That's right in line, 40, 45 to 50% is what we see when we're working with other municipalities throughout the state too. Okay? All right. Again, here, more detail on, on the trend with those categories of expenditures, really nothing further to, to add in that regard. I've got a slide on the budget to actual results. So I'll just provide a little bit more commentary here on this one. So in total, you can see revenue is a bit under and really, you know, again, what I mentioned about that, that grant reimbursement for the city hall project, that's coming through here on this line. You can see that's why there's a 1.5 million variance as far as actual being less than budget. So that offsets some of the other positive results on the revenue categories. And then down in the expenditures, the tot, in total, being under most of that capital outlay related, just because at the beginning of the year, when the budgets finalized towards the tail end of the previous year, it's always hard to know exactly how some, how the timing of some of those projects will play out and significant capital purchases and, and so forth. So that's the item to note there. But then, you know, things like public safety being the most significant category, and then even general government following behind that, the variances on those compared to budget are extremely small. So great, great cost management containment efforts in place by the folks involved in, in keeping in line with the, the amounts in the approved budget. So, okay? All right. Real quick here on, on some of the other funds. So for fire and ambulance, 2023 was really an outlier, and we'll see this again on the next one for parks and rec. But there was some significant capital outlay items in the previous year that came through, a couple, couple trucks, a tanker truck and a ladder truck in 2023, and then with some funding that was coming through to offset, boosting the revenue and the expenditures for that year. Now, if you kind of take that out and look at the trend, you see more of a typical annualized increase over this period that we're looking at here. And then parks and rec, somewhat similar, but there was a buildup in the fund balance, intentional buildup in the fund balance there in anticipation of some significant capital outlay costs that were going to come through. That did happen in 2023. So the large spike in the expenditures, now again, they're kind of coming back down to what would be expected from an annualized perspective. Okay? Oops. All right. So for the water fund, and we do have a footnote at the bottom of the, of the graph here, and this is talked about in more detail in, in the narrative, that's with the graph in the communications letter. But the unique thing in regards to 2024, and we've adjusted for it within the graph here because the, the graph really looked odd and just led to some information that would have been just caused miss, you know, folks to be misled. So we just decided to correct it within here. But in 2024, there was a fairly substantial amount of costs related to the PFAS project that started to happen. Those were coming through the fund and the reporting in the financial statements requires those to be in the operating expense section. But given they're covered by a, a funding source from the Pollution Control Agency and others, then, and that goes in the non-operating section, somewhat unique, but that's just how it is. What we did then is to provide more of apples to apples, is back those, back that impact out. So for revenues, the decline from 2023 and then even from the years prior to that, number of items, so with development slowing down a bit, the number of the connection charges that were quite significant in 22 and 23, those really came down in 24. So that was the big part. And then just some decrease in usage, which of course can fluctuate just based on how the year goes as far as how, how dry things are, the need for irrigation and all that kind of stuff. So less usage in 24 as well. All that being said, the, the net result did still allow for covering all the expenses plus depreciation expense on the, on the infrastructure that's in place for the water utility and other capital assets. So certainly still a, a great result, but, you know, a notable dip on the operating income line there, about 95,000 compared to about over 600,000 the previous year. Okay? And then with the sewer utility, the numbers here really stayed very, very much consistent, with the exception that, you know, there's the, the rate, the annual rate increases that are happening to bring revenues up by a couple percentage points, two, three percent. But it wasn't enough to offset some of the other increases on the cost side, charges from, you know, Met Council and so forth. So that being said, the trend here has been that that, that operating margin has been shrinking year over year. And it did, it did dip just very slightly to the negative for 2024. And again, this number is after the non-cash depreciation expense of, you know, north of, north of $500,000 depreciation expense. But still something to be cognizant of as far as that trend there. And, you know, just, you know, making sure that, you know, if there's need for, you know, rate, rate studies, things like that from time to time, you know, to figure out, you know, where, where the right place is to be on, on that piece. But yeah, that's still, all in all, a, a good result to be able to pretty much cover close to 100% of the depreciation costs. So, okay? So then just quickly, the other two enterprise funds, stormwater and the hydro fund, you know, relative to water and sewer, not, you know, dollars-wise, not nearly as significant. Storm, stormwater, very much consistent over the time period that we're looking at here, slight increases. The hydro fund does jump, move around a little bit more. And there was a, was a dip in the, on the revenue side in 2024, just with not as much generation activity happening. And that one somewhat similar to what was noted on the sewer utility, a slight negative result on the operating line there, but still covered most all the expenses plus, plus depreciation. Okay? All right. Then the last two slides I have are in regards to the tax rates and, and the, and the next one we'll look at shows the trend in comparison to the levy. So here, and the next slide gets into a little bit more, more detail, but as far as that tax capacity rate, so it, it dropped down quite significantly going from 22 to 23 because there was such a large increase in the market value assessments that happened during that time period. That jump wasn't quite as much going from 23 to 24. So it, it went up, went back up, but not nearly to the point of where it was, you know, in some of those years, going back to, say, 2020, 2021, still a couple percentage points under where it was for, for those years. So, oops. So then here is where you can see then, as I was mentioning, that, that significant jump from 22 to 23 on the capacity, taxable capacity piece. And then, you know, with the levy being at a fairly, you know, standard annual increase, not having the, more significant jumps in one particular year as the tax capacity piece. So, so that being said, you know, still a, a, a good position for the city to be in, in terms of that. So, okay? All right. There's my contact information. Should you have any, any questions, concerns, feel free to reach out to me. We look at the audit, being your audit service provider, as kind of a year-round relationship. If there's anything that surfaces where we can be of assistance, kind of in the off-peak time too, in helping out the city, whether it be a technical matter or something related to a grant, whatever it might be, certainly reach out. So I know, I know Chris and Ashley will. And, and just lastly, I'll welcome any questions that folks have. But then I also just want to say, we, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the city and, and the great working relationship that we have with the folks here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Counsel, any questions? Counselmember House?
Thank you, Honor. I just want to say, Christian, Ashley, I'm so thankful and as well as for you, for all the hard work that you guys do planning our budget. I know it's a lot of work. And one of the main questions I had was, out of all of the other years that, have we ever had a material weakness for the government standards audit? Do you know of? I know it's kind of a broad question.
Yeah. So, and, and I guess I'll, I'll probably have to defer to Chris just because, well, I was here last year. I actually made the switch to Bergen KDV. I was with another CPA firm for the first 19 to 20 years of my career and made the switch. So last year was kind of my first year getting fully involved in the, in the city's audit. But I'll defer to Chris. I, and I, I know since the time you've been here, I, I don't know if you recall.
I can just say, this is my fifth audit. I know that we've had a couple years with, with no findings at all and others with, with a couple. But honestly, I, I can't remember my first and second year, what the findings were exactly. So, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember House.
Now, I was just going to say, on, on that note, and hopefully through my comments came through that, you know, it, it's, it's somewhat unfortunate that we have to report it as such because all in all, things are in great shape. It's just when it comes to some of the technicalities that we have to follow as the auditors, we find ourselves in those situations sometimes of, in order to, to do our job and adhere to the standards, we have to, have to report that, even though it's certainly not indicative of, of all the, all the great work that, that is done and, and, and the multitude of everything else that was done very well and perfect. And there's always a, you know, there, from time to time, there's, there's, you know, a couple nuances that come through.
I was grateful to hear that we're very, we're doing very well off comparative to others as well, so I'm grateful for that. And our teams that we have here, they do a wonderful job every, every year, so completely grateful overall.
Great, thank you. All right then, with that, Counsel, I would accept a motion to accept the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Motion has been made by Councilmember Pembel and a second by Councilmember House. Any new discussion, Counsel? Okay? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you, Chris, yes. Tonight, we have an authorization for a license agreement with the Metropolitan Council to use a portion of their property for parking needs during Hockey Day Minnesota. And with that, we have an introduction by Ryan Stempski, our Public Works Director. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I am going to use the map from former Representative Hudella, since it was right up here. This is pertaining to, if you may have caught the, the note of parking in the Hockey Day discussion earlier on the agenda, but just north of Ravenna Trail is where Met Council owns a, a lot that was going to be the future wastewater treatment plant location, as we have heard from them in the past. But they own over what is equated out to be 1,000 to 1,500 parking spots. So very beneficial to the event to have parking on site and adjacent to the, the village facilities. And so, and in discussions with Met Council, the, the, the Met Council would only provide a license agreement to the city of Hastings and so the local municipality, not with the Hockey Day Committee. So that was just flat out their, their situation if parking was going to be pursued. So in those discussions, the city inserted discussions with myself and our city attorney just to talk through the legalities of using that lot for these purposes for our community and for this event. You saw this was in the list of the city requests, so there has been city time put in to make this happen for, it's one of these partnership things with, with making the Hockey Day successful. The license agreement itself allows at no cost for this, this lot to be used. It allows for, I think Shane mentioned this, it allows for a mowing before the winter season because you can tell now the, the weeds get up pretty high and they stay tall, so it wouldn't be conducive to park next winter, but allows somebody to go on that lot under the city's discretion to go mow that lot down. It allows, there's a gate right at Glendale. It allows, it allows the post to be pulled out and the fence to be pulled back for proper ingress and egress. If you're parking 1,500 cars, you can't have a skinny little gate, for example. So that's something that the police department and Public Works Department has looked at. And then, couple more things, it allows the Hockey Day Committee to charge for parking. And so that was kind of a, an interesting piece in the agreement. That's not always commonly done, but the, since this is raising money for Hastings Hockey Program and for UHL, Met Council worked that into the agreement and, and got that approved with their real estate department just to generate more revenue for the event. And lastly, there'll be a location away from Glendale where there'll be crossing, so pedestrian crossing. Right now, there's some shrubs and, and smaller sized volunteer trees that Met Council's allowing Hockey Day Committee to get in and cut down a pedestrian pathway so people can park through a controlled ingress egress at Glendale. And then they'll be directed as a pedestrian flow to enter the site closer to the entrance. So I think it's somewhere in, in this location here. So this is the main entrance, but there's some, some minor tree cover here that'll just have to be graded out and, and some volunteer, less than four inch diameter trees cut down for safe pedestrian crossing. And that's where you heard Shane talk about crossing guards, whether that's done with police reserves or volunteer staff under police discretion and county input, since this is a county road, that, that would happen in that location across Ravenna Trail to get people safely into and out of the event. So all these things are in the license agreement, and that license agreement is here for approval. With that, we would send it back to Met Council for their final execution, and we'd each retain a copy. The agreement starts, I believe, in September so that that mowing could be done. That's the first action. The gate could be pulled prior to frozen conditions, and then it goes through the end of January, so it would cover the time of the, the event. And I believe that is all we had in there. Our city attorney reviewed it as well, so if you have any questions for either of us, we could definitely answer those.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions, Council? Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I fully support this, Ryan. Thank you for this presentation. This is a very, very finite question, and I don't even know, Ryan, you always know the answer, and I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this one, it might be the mayor. What is, when you're talking about the fees, the parking fees that will be charged, and then you mentioned that local hockey boosters will get a percentage of that, I'm wondering if anybody knows what that split is between UHL and hockey boosters? No?
It, it's a 50/50 split as far as our revenue is.
Okay. Fantastic. That's just what I was hoping. Okay, great, thanks.
And I don't believe if part of that question was the charging, I don't believe we've set that price.
It's not. It was last meeting, we just discussed it, and it was around, it was minimal compared to other years that we've searched for, so. Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Okay, with that, Counsel, I would accept a motion to authorize a signature for a license agreement with the Metropolitan Council for use of property on Ravenna Trail for parking for Hockey Day Minnesota 26. Councilmember Verachov has a first, and Councilmember Pembel has a second. Any new discussion, Counsel? No? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, Ryan. Under Public Works tonight for the Central Water Treatment Plant, 1290 North Frontage Road. For this item, we will have an introduction first by County, our Community Development Director, John Hinsman. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. So for this action, we have three different steps that we are pursuing tonight. I'll take care of the first couple that are planning related, then Ryan will be up here for the last portion of it. So from a planning standpoint, we're looking at actions related to the Central Water Treatment Plant, which I'm sure that the council is well aware of in our journey towards PFAS treatment. The two actions that we have before us tonight are a plat of the property and a site plan. I'll go through those briefly. The plat of the property essentially takes these two lots here, which is North Frontage Road, 1290 North Frontage Road, 1300 North Frontage Road, and combines those into a single property. We own the property here with our groundwater treatment facility, and then we own the property here, which is presently the home of Carboni's Pizza and Stacy Star's Dance Studio. With the site plan aspect of it, we would be tearing down the existing building over here and building a new water treatment facility. As the council is well aware, this involves the relocation of Stacy Stars and Carboni's. We've been working with them over the past six, seven months to, to find them new spots and hopeful that we'll have announcements for everything here in the near future. But that property would be taken down completely. A, a new water treatment plant would be built on the property, about 16,000 square feet altogether. So this is what the site would look like here. And we did have the Planning Commission review this at their last meeting on June 9th. They did vote 4-0 to recommend approval of both the plat and the site plan. During the public hearing portion of it, we didn't have anyone speak to that. We did have some questions from those at attendance after the public hearing pertaining to general PFAS stuff, chemical storage, construction timeframe and so forth. So that's what we're looking at here. Generally, with the property site development, it's going to look something like this. It's a, a bigger building that we have right now out there, a little bit taller. When you look around the, the property, most of it's surrounded by commercial. We do have a residential area with Hastings Townhomes to the north of it. Prior to Planning Commission, there was a neighborhood meeting held specifically to share the concept plan with the neighborhoods. We've been in contact with them. We have not had any, had any comments back from them at this point. So the facility itself would generally be unmanned. There would be periodic visits by Public Works staff to provide maintenance of it, but not a lot of activity on the site as we move forward with it. This is what the property looks like today. You can see the front of the property between the two buildings. This is what it looks like from the rear, from the residential area, and then the building itself. Building meets architectural standards, meets our landscape standards on that one. It'll be an attractive looking building on the campus here, recognizing the fact that it is, is on a, a very high-traveled roadway and very visible. So that is what we're asking for tonight. We've got two resolutions on the planning end of it, one for the preliminary and final plat approval, and the other one for the site plan approval, and I could stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Counsel? Councilmember House.
I don't have any questions at all, so thank you for all that you guys do for planning for this PFAS as well. This center is going to be amazing, so I'd make, make a resolution for the preliminary plat and final plat, and I'm able to combine them. And as far, as the resolution for the site plan for approval.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember House. Second, Counsel? Councilmember Verachov will second. Any discussion, Counsel? Okay? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. For the second part of it, we will have Ryan.
Is there a, a motion in the site plan as well, or was that combined?
Oh, we did them both.
You did, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Ryan.
Of course, Community Development Director gets all the fun stuff. I get the approving plans and specs and authorizing ad for bids. Get down to the financials, no. That is our section, so the last piece is to approve the plans and specifications that go into this. I didn't bring the hundreds of pages of plan set. I didn't think the council wanted to go through those tonight, but definitely have those available at, at Public Works if folks ever want to dive into the detail of what, what goes on inside this plant. We, I, I think John Mayor may not have covered it, but this is the first of the three treatment plants, the central treatment plant treating wells three, five, and seven for PFAS, so that, that's what this facility would be put in place to do. It also has space in the western wing that would be set up for nitrate treatment. So there would be an ion exchange area where, similar to the, the existing plant next door that isn't full capacity. If we are on, we, we regularly, regularly test for nitrates out of those three wells. If we ever get at concerning levels, we can implement treatment in this space. And so economies of scale, that's why we built this out to cover that, so we're not asking ourselves, why didn't we do that in the future? So that's what's in this facility. The, as John mentioned, we did have a, a public meeting, so we've talked to the neighbors out here. We've, we've re-engaged with those neighbors with discussions about keeping curb lines in place so that drainage would be maintained, adding pavement to the side of the building so that snow removal wouldn't be built up on a larger sized roof, and we could back drag that in and not have a, a, a snow buildup issued to our neighboring properties. We moved tanks and, and building construction 20-plus feet away to stay away from slab-on-grain foundations of concern of neighboring properties. And so really thought about those concerns that we heard at public meetings, and we believe we've addressed those concerns for this facility and the facility operations. The, the, the funding remains on track for this project, so we have several different segments to build a, a facility of this size, but the, the total $27.7 million budget is what we're tracking right now, broken down into our funding categories. So this is the, the plant that, having a connection to well number five, we estimate approximately total amount of $15.1 million of the 3M settlement funds, and so that is why we're starting with this plant. This treats well five, and so those, those agreements with the co-trustees of 3M settlement funds are in process. They're going well, and we expect to have those on a council meeting, and, meeting in July to bring that back for approval before we would award the, the, the project. So this would go out for bid this week with council approval, and then the bid opening would be scheduled for July 15th at 2:00 PM. We, these treatment plants go out for typically about four weeks rather than the, the traditional three weeks we do on our, our, our city infrastructure projects, just to give contractors time to pull together complex pricing and estimating for, for this type of a project. So there's a lot of vendors involved and, and media and vessels and piping and manifolds and electrical, and so we, we, we allow a little more time just so that we get the best bids possible for the city, and we answer any questions or concerns prior to bid opening. The goal would be then to award a, a contract at the July 21st City Council meeting, and that would get us into construction in August on, onto the site and, and get working on this facility. So the typical timeframe for this size treatment plant is about 18 months. So with some startup and, and just because of the winter months, we have our final, we have our startup in January of 2027 with, with a final completion in May of 2027. That's just getting the, the grass and, and trees and everything fully established and whatnot, but we're, we're right in the ballpark of that 18-month to, to startup window with this timeframe. So one thing not pictured in here, I just wanted to mention, something unique about this facility is the pedestrian fill station. So we've talked about with council and in workshops and at public meetings, this will also have in the bid package the pedestrian fill station, which would be located right in front of the ground storage reservoir there in the middle of this campus where pedestrians could, pedestrians, residents could drive up and punch in their account number and for free of charge for those users of, of our water system, could fill up jugs at various sizes to get PFAS-removed water for those in need of it at this point in time until we get all facilities online. So that is in the bid, bid package, and that is broken down, so we'll, we'll, we'll know that cost. And that's a cost that's anticipated to be covered by the 3M settlement funds as well. So just trying to be, we're being very clear, very transparent with, with those costs and, and what are, look to be recouped by those 3M settlement funds. So with that, any questions the council may have? I'll take those at this time.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. I do have one question. Is there a certain contractor that just builds these type of treatment plants, or is it just any type of a contractor? I mean, is there a special?
Yeah, no, good question, Mayor. There are specialized contractors that build water treatment plants, most definitely. So those, you know, our, our designers work with them throughout the state in this region, and so when our, when our bids go out, we have discussions, we make sure people are aware to come look at our project. We know what the bidding markets, what's going on. Cottage Grove just bid, bid a market out, Northfield just bid one out. So there's, there's different communities that bid these out, and we see who bid, where did they place, who's, who might be hungry, who might be interested in. So yes, it's a very niche market, and, and there's, there's a, a lot of folks, I won't say a lot, but there's a handful of, of teams that are, are highly qualified to bid on these types of projects, and those are the ones we typically see, see come out to bid tabulations like this.
Great, thank you. Plus, I'll just say, this has been, this is the start of the beginning, right? Plus, I'll just say, this has been, this is the start of the beginning, right? And I just want to appreciate you and John, what you've done, working with the property owners and trying to make that as transparent as possible, and the importance of this first one being done soon and the next to come in the future. So with that, counsel, I would accept a motion. Let's see, for a resolution approving the plans and authorizing the advertisement of bids for the central water treatment plant. Councilmember Pembel was the first, and Councilmember House is the second. Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, tonight under community development, we have a resolution for a variance for a fence height for Michael Fuchs, 2570 Cannon Street. And for this introduction, John Hinsman will join us again.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, city council members. So put up a little bit of information on the request that we have before us tonight here, and... We already talked about water treatment plant, we can go through that. Looking at a fence variance tonight, and little different change from what's in the packet here tonight. I'll start off by saying that with a variance request, it requires six of seven council members, and tonight we only have five. So we are unable to take final action on the request tonight, but since the request itself came with two varying recommendations on that, one for approval by our planning commission and one for denial by city staff, thought it'd be good to present the information tonight and get some direction from the council as to what type of resolution that we should be drafting. So the action tonight is not going to be approval or denial of this permit itself or this request, but to direct staff to prepare a resolution for either approval or denial based upon the conditions or the discussion that was in the staff report that we have tonight or at the planning commission meeting. So I'll set it up in that fashion. So background on the request itself, we have a situation here with Michael Fuchs, 2570 Cannon Street. He's seeking to replace an existing rear yard fence. I'll show some images here in just a moment. The fence has some sections that are greater than six feet in height. That's important because the fence ordinance has a limit of six feet. He has some portions in the backyard that are up to eight feet in height. The fence was constructed by Mr. Fuchs back in 1998. There was a fence permit that was issued at that time. However, the height of the fence was not indicated on the permit itself. So the fence received a city permit at that time, but was constructed up to eight feet in some sections. I will note there's a pool in the rear yard here, that's a, a primary reason for the protection, and the new fence that's being proposed would not be any taller than the existing fence. So this is the property here on Cannon Street, as you can see. This is probably a better view of what we're looking at. Little unusual situation with the property here is that you've got a retaining wall which goes up a couple feet here on Mr. Fuchs' property, six-foot fence in this location, and then as the retaining wall on Mr. Fuchs' property disappears here, the fence towards the corner here goes up to eight feet in height. What you can't see very well is on the other side of the fence, the grade goes up another two feet. So you've got kind of a tiered effect going up between this property here, a retaining wall here, and then on the other side of this fence, another retaining wall on the neighboring property which goes up to two feet. So I think one of the reasons Mr. Fuchs is seeking this request is the overall effect of height from the other side of the property is not a six-foot fence in this area, but really a four-foot fence in this area. It would be six feet. So that's one of the reasons why I think he's looking forward, he's coming forward with this request here. So as I said, we've got a couple of competing recommendations on that one. One is from the planning commission. The planning commission did review this at their last meeting and voted three to one with one commissioner voting nay to recommend approval of the variance. The rationale that the planning commission proposed was to grant the variance because there's a difference of grade between the two properties. The 1998 permit approval resulted in an eight-foot fence, and the new fence is not to be taller than the existing fence. So they looked at that and came up with these specific rationale for their rationale for approval of this. From a staff standpoint, we're looking at a couple of different things. One, specifically within our code, and this is based off of the state statutes, we have specific findings of fact that we need to present in order to support the approval of a variance. And from our review of it, we do not see a practical difficulty present to meet the requirements. We look at the conditions as not being terribly unique to the property. We do have properties throughout the city that do have varying heights, and the effectiveness on those fences on properties is not a terribly unusual item, and the fence does meet the four-foot requirement for this. My standpoint as a Mr. Fuchs, under the current code, would be perfectly free to construct the fence at the maximum height and afford all the privacy and protections that are within there. So that is our rationale for denial of it. As I said, we've got these competing recommendations that move forward. Mr. Fuchs is here tonight if you have any questions for him. And again, what we're looking for from the council tonight is direction from the council as to what type of variance or what type of resolution we should present for final action at the next meeting on July 7th, whether that would be an action related to approval of the variance, which again will require six of seven, and if the variance approval is something that the planning, at the city council is seeking to have a draft written, any specific findings of fact that should be included, if they're similar to the planning commission, or if there's modifications to that. Consequently, if the city council is seeking to support denial of the variance request, ask for some direction on that as well as far as specific findings of fact based upon what the staff has written or anything else that they may have. So I will stand at this time for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much, John. So one of the questions I have is it looks like this, the original fence was built in 1998, correct?
Correct.
Have we had any constituent complaints since 1998 with the fence at the height it's been at?
Not aware of any complaints, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Any other council member back?
Just an important note, because not everybody is going to read every piece of information out there. It was not a unanimous decision by the planning commission.
Correct.
Approval, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beck. Councilmember Pembel.
John, what's the replacement fence going to be?
I believe it's going to be a board-on-board fence, similar, Mr. Fuchs, to what this is?
Alterating board cedar fence built by Midwest Fence.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Dan, you'd like to say a few words? Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sorry, Dan. So just off of Councilmember House's question, which was, has there been any neighborhood issues since 1998? And so do neighbors now know that there is the potential, this conversation about the fence being replaced? Is that something that you, do you have good relationships with your neighbors, sir? Are they, are they in favor of this?
Yeah, nobody, I've talked to all my neighbors that bought the fence. Everybody's fine. As I said, the reason we did it originally, there's two foot retainable right on the property that the neighbors had. So we were looking for six-foot of privacy, so we built a six-foot fence first from their side, and it was a four-foot. And we did get approval from the city to do that, and it's funny because on the program I gave to the city, they asked me to bring that, and I actually thought I had a variance when we did it. I was told to bring that to the city, I brought it to the city, then a member from the city came up to the house, looked at it and said, yep, no problem, stamped and approved. I thought I had a variance, but we didn't. And that's what it is kind of funny, that we never wrote eight foot on there because the only reason we drew it was so that they could come and look at it. That's why they wanted me to draw that picture. So they could see what the circumstances were brought on. Yeah, we've had no problem, we have great relationships with the neighbors.
And I will note as well, council member, that as part of the variance request, we do are obligated to mail out notice within 350 feet of the property, and we have not received any comments from the neighbors from that.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Councilmember House?
Thank you. With that being said, it's not often, I echo Councilmember Leifeld generally with the statement that I go against staffing recommendations, but for this, I will say that I would be in agreement to approve the fence as it is as well.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Dan?
Question for clarification, John. Maybe I missed it when reading the memo or when we talked on this last week. The, I don't even know how to describe this. The portion of the fence that is six feet high, one more, that one, sorry, on the left of the screen, the portion that's six feet high and above that retaining wall on the left? Yeah, in that area. Did I hear tonight that there's an additional grade difference in retaining wall, I believe to the west on the other side of that fence, so that the neighboring yard is actually higher than what the retaining wall, the visible retaining wall is? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's another two feet essentially.
So what we're calling six feet from this side on the other side looks like four feet?
Correct.
And, help me, I'm just trying to walk this through in my mind. If we were to say the height has to be reduced, the overall height has to be reduced because the far right side in the corner is eight feet and can't be more than six. So if they wanted to keep the top of the fence level, the far left side, back where we started, would be essentially about four feet high, but from the neighbor's side would be a two-foot fence, is that?
No, I think, when I'm looking at this thing here, is I think the grade on the other side of the fence is pretty similar to about this, two feet above this retaining wall. So it's probably a little bit larger over here, is that?
It's pretty, there's two neighbors that have retaining walls lined, so it's not just one retaining wall lined, it's two separate stopping orders. And then the walls are about two feet high, but the ground kind of slows down too as you go to the north. And that's why, because we started in that far-left corner, in the south corner, and then we just kept it all the way across. And you can see we just extended the borders down to keep the height the same. It's a little deceptive there that you ask about the retaining wall. My retaining wall, there's about four feet from my retaining wall to the fence, which is where we have the plant. It kind of, the picture I took, kind of almost inside the fence, the retaining wall's there, and the fence is right behind it. It is four feet wide.
Yeah.
Right in front of the two-foot fence.
Okay, thank you.
So we have Councilmember House, Councilmember Verachov, are you ready to?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to answer John's question and looking for guidance on this tonight, I'm with Councilmember House on this. I am very, very hesitant, almost if ever, to go against or view differently city opinion on this, but to me, all the needs have been met. This is thoughtful, I appreciate our neighbor's consideration that he's given to this, the fact that this has been the standard within his community for so long, and I think that it adds a little bit of privacy and possibly even safety in terms of having a pool. I know that if I was ever to have a pool in my backyard, I would want a little bit higher fence, too. Yeah, I, I don't think that I would be against something like this. I would just also like to point out the irony, just on a little bit of a lighter note, that we have talked about wastewater treatment plants and city budgets and the potential of bringing hundreds of thousands of dollars and people of tourism for our hockey day. And I just love that we are ending this meeting talking about a two-foot potential fence.
Yes.
Issue, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov.
Sorry.
And I too would go along with Councilmember House and Verachov. I see no issue with it. Councilmember Pembel?
I guess, in retrospect, looking back to 1998 and the thought of putting in the pool and the fence and the, looking at a six-foot, eight-foot variance of the fence built from west to east or north to south, I don't remember if it's whichever.
South to north.
South to north. That, I think that personally, yes, the staff has, you know, we have these guidelines and certain standards that have to be met, but in this instance, I think that as long as, because there's a property variance of two foot on the other side that gives you more elevation and that the fence that's in there has been in place since 1998, and I think that a comparable fence at that height, yes, the city staff is following the guidelines that is laid out, but in this instance, I think that it should be permissible to replace like-for-like as long as the elevation doesn't change and you're in good terms with the neighbors and we'll have to work on that at the next council meeting when we have everybody here. But I think that that's something that could be done.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. John, you got your direction?
I got my direction. So what we will do is we will prepare a resolution for approval for council action on July 7th. We'll base that upon the recommendation of the planning commission at that point, and we'll go from there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmembers, any announcements? I have more than a few. Summer rec programs at the Levy, Wednesday, June 18th, Storytime in the Park. The theme is Garden, a partnership with Pleasant Hill Library. Saturday, June 21st is Make Music Day with variety of live music, food trucks, music trivia, and gift card giveaways. Tuesday, June 24th, Comedy in the Park with Jesse Campbell, sponsored by Smead Manufacturing Company. Thursday, June 26th, Music and Market with Holy Racarolas, tribute to 50s, supported by Ruth and George Doffing Charitable Fund. Thursday, July 3rd, Music and Market with Steam Machine Old Time Bluegrass, supported by Ruth and George Doffing Charitable Fund. Tuesday, July 8th, is Party in the Park. Celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month with live Caribbean music, activity booths, caricature artists, bounce houses, face painting, inflatable obstacle course, and this event is free, but food trucks do charge. Rec and Art Police is Wednesday, June 25th, 1:00 to 2:00 PM, at Sunny Acres, which is global games, artsy fireworks, and activities, supported by SC Toys, Country Financial, Hastings Lions Club, Hastings Family Service, Community Ed, and Hastings Prescott Arts Council. Safety Camp is Friday, June 27th, for kids entering third to fifth grade. Safety topics include outdoors, water, fire, bicycle, and self-defense. Pre-registration is required in partnership with community education and sponsored by Dakota Electric Association. The Arts and Culture Commission hosts Shakespeare in the Park, All's Well That Ends Well at JCPark on Sunday, June 29th. City offices will be closed Thursday, June 19th in observance of Juneteenth, and Friday, July 4th in observance of Independence Day. Meetings, Tuesday, June 17th, Heritage Preservation Commission is at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, June 18th, Parks and Recreation Commission has been canceled. Monday, June 23rd, Parks and Recreation Committee, 7:00 PM, and 7:00 PM Planning Commission. Monday, June 23rd, Parkson Recreation Committee, 7:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. Planning Commission. Monday, June 30th, is Operations Committee, and Monday, July 7th, 7:00 p.m. council meeting. With that, counsel, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember House, Councilmember Pembel, no discussion. All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And we are adjourned.